Sir for this morning. Earlier is an assistant professor of political science at South Western University. She received her masters and PhD in politics from the University of Virginia and a BA in Communication from George Washington University's School of Media and Public Affairs. She is the recipient of the 2020 Craig L. Bryan's Award for Excellence in Undergraduate Leadership and Mentorship from the American Political Science Association, EPSA, and was a member of EPSA's inaugural institute for civically engaged research, which focuses on building reciprocal relationships between academia and community organizations to improve governance and solve social and political problems. Please welcome our moderator for this morning's event, Dr. Emily Sivin.
All right, well, thank you for the lovely introduction and welcome to all of our candidates. What I hope is that the most difficult thing that you all will do this morning is pass the microphone between you. And so we're going to practice that now. If all of you can just sort of quickly say your name and what place you're running for, that prevents me from potentially ruining how you pronounce your name and gives us a sense of who all is up here before we let you give your full introduction and get started with the names and places and then I'll lay out some of the rules.
Good morning, James Share for place one.
Good morning, Eric Marine for place three.
Good morning, Cody Hurt for place three.
Good morning, Elizabeth McFarlane, place two.
Eric Glassley, place one. Alan Brown, place two.
Good morning, Tony Easton, place three.
All right, I think we're all gonna be okay. The mic is asking what next one? Wonder if like, um, so a quick sort of recap of the rules, I think you guys have all heard this before, but you'll have two minutes each to answer each question. We'll start on one end and work our way down. And then of course, the second question, we'll start with the next person. So start with James for question one, start with Eric for question two, work our way down. There are five questions, sorry guys. You'll get two minutes. We have a lovely yellow thirty second warning sign here for you. When we start to get close to thirty seconds, when your time is up, we're just going to hold up the red sign. Once that red sign is up, I will also interrupt you, but we don't want to have that. This is a civil conversation. I don't want to have to interrupt you. I don't want to have to cut you off. So please try to keep an eye on the time and on the signs and we'll go from there. So having said all of that, we will go ahead and start with our first question, which is just to please briefly introduce yourself and explain why you are running for school board. James, take it away.
Good morning, James Share for place one. To know why I'm running, you have to know a little bit about me, so we'll do this as quick as we can. I came from a abusive and addiction ridden household. At twelve years old, I was homeless. If it wasn't for the school system, a few great teachers and administrators, I would have never graduated and got to the next step in my life. For me, that was the United States Navy. I spent eight years in the Navy and I would have lived there, but I met a girl and we started a family. And I knew for me, being present was the most important thing at that point. I tell people I married Texas in 2006. We moved back to Texas to be around Crystal's family. In 2011, we moved our family here to Georgetown because we love the community, because we love the traditional values of Georgetown, because we were looking for a K through twelve experience for our children. And so fast forward, our oldest is now an eleventh grader at GHS and our youngest is an eighth grader at Benold. I spent the last eleven years in our community volunteering, coaching everything from sea perch to seven on seven football, was a PTA president, board member on booster clubs. Now that my kids are older and want distance from me, I got some time freed up. And in that time, I've spent the last sixteen years building companies. Recently, we've been awarded to the Austin Fast Fifty as one of the fastest growing businesses in central Texas. And we're also awarded the A five thousand list this year. So managing growth and transitioning through growth is one of my superpowers. With what's going on in Georgetown and the amount of growth we have, the connection with my kids into the district, helping us keep that culture that brought my family here while we grow is really important and one of the reasons and one of the things I bring that no one else can bring to our board. Thank you.
Hello again, Eric Marine. I am new to Georgetown. My wife and I moved from Houston about six or seven months ago. This is our home now. This is where we decided to land in our late years. I'm semi-retired. I do have a couple of businesses that I run. And I, the reason I'm running is because I love education. Even as a young man in elementary school, I tutor other kids. I was always good at math, good at sciences. I was a good, I was a good student in terms of grades. And so I wanted to share that with others. And so since then, even as an adult in Houston, I volunteered in the volunteer public school systems for many years. And this was always there really because it was a passion of my heart. It's in the DNA of my body. My, my father, my grandfather instilled education in all of us. I did go on to Texas A&amp;M's where my dad went, so it was kind of a place I had to go to because it was part of my family. And, you know, continue to help others, tutor others. When I was, you know, as an adult, I was on a couple of charter schools, the board of a couple of charter schools. I'm also a lecturer at a university or was a lecturer at a university. So again, education is very dear to my heart. And I do know that you don't really succeed in life, or you could, but it's a lot harder unless you have that platform, unless you have a good scholastic upbringing with people who care about you. My partner here to the right, you know, he had professors, he had teachers that were really interested in making him successful. So I know the importance of that. As a trustee, I know that I can do that as well. So I'll take my volunteerism in school, I'll take my tutoring in school, and even as a board member, continue to visit programs, campuses, students, teachers, and parents in all the communities to make sure that you are listened to and that we're doing the right things for our children.
I got a chair, good win. I'm Cody Hurt. I'm running for place three. So I've been in Georgetown since 2003 when a guy by the name of Johnny Gant hired me in aircraft sales. Between 2003 and 2007, when I started a charity called Veteran Outdoors, I fell in love with the story. And that's when I knew that I wanted to raise my family. I have a wife that I've been married to for sixteen years. I have a third grade son who goes to Ford Elementary and a sixth grade daughter who goes to Benold. The best thing about having both of them is I have an ear in school. I think it's so important to have parents on the board. I knew right away that my son had missed first grade and second grade because of COVID. What I didn't know is how much he really lost in learning and it breaks my heart. That's really the reason I'm running, guys. When I look at him and I, I know the ability that we had to be at home with him and to continue teaching him, and I still see the learning loss in early literacy. What about the parents that didn't have that opportunity? They didn't, that, that weren't able to keep someone at home? Where are those kids? And that's what's important to me is to make sure that Georgetown, Texas catches up. Do we identify those kids? Do we give them the tools and the opportunity to catch back up? I think it's so important. Now, also with growth, I have two businesses on the square. One is starting in 2016 called Ski Creek Outfitters and one in 2020 called The Golden Rule. As James mentioned also, you know, we've started businesses, we've grown them, and now we're actually taking them other places. I have a Ski Creek in Del Rio and we're starting another one in a unknown location right now. But with that, there's twenty-three multi-billion dollar businesses coming to Williamson County. There's gonna be a lot of growth. We're going to need to know how to manage that. We need business people and parents. Again, it's Cody Hurt, place three.
I'm Brian Plax, I'm running for place one. And I moved to Georgetown in nineteen ninety-seven. Got four kids, two who have graduated from GISC schools and two are currently enrolled there. So the reason I'm running is, is that when we moved here in nineteen ninety-seven, Georgetown school districts were rated sort of second, right, right behind E's as, as the school district go for a high quality education. And as we sit here today, I counted up between eight and nine school districts that are generally doing a better job in terms of higher rated schools in our incentive Texas area. So I think that we, we can do better. We've done better in the past and we need to do better again. So before I came here, I was a professor of electrical engineering at, at Mississippi State and I have a PhD of electrical engineering from Stanford University. I've, I've been in and around education a lot. And when I've, I've had the pleasure of tutoring my kids through classes. And by the way, if you're thinking about, you know, as a parent, if your child comes and asks you for help on your homework, the way that you can emphasize to them that's really important is to immediately drop whatever they're doing and immediately start figuring your homework with them. And that, that communicates that, that whatever their problem is, it's way more important than whatever you're working on. It really emphasizes to them that you need to, that they need to work hard on. And so I think that what we need to do is, is we need to work hard to make our, our classrooms better, our schools better, and, and try to get better results for our children.
Good morning, Elizabeth McFarlane. I am current board president and I have been here in Georgetown for almost twenty years. It was Fort Hood that first brought us here. My husband and I served in the Army. We are both graduates of West Point and we, our first ten years in Georgetown were really just, you know, kind of come in and go in as we worked in the Army. When we left active duty, we had the whole wide world open as to where we were going to settle. We wanted to choose a hometown for our children and we found it right here where we already were at work. And the reason why is I was so excited about the work that the community had been doing at that point to build a strategic plan and a learner profile for developing our students to prepare them for their future as whole child. We emphasize soft skills right alongside hard skills. We put an emphasis on innovation, creativity, and those were the things that resonated to me as a parent. I have four children, three of them are still in the district. My oldest has graduated and is now a freshman in Texas A&amp;M studying engineering. Georgetown schools well-prepared him for that. And then my second son is graduating this year and completely different path. He is going to join the military, but again, Georgetown schools prepared him for that path. I have two more students, an eighth grader and a fourth grader. And so I will continue to be a parent here in Georgetown for the foreseeable future. Again, the reason I am seeking reelection for the school board is I am excited about the work that we have done, but it's a long game and we've got to stay the course. Again, we are committed to preparing students for their future, not teaching them based on our past.
Eric Glassley, place one. And I have been in Georgetown since nineteen ninety-six. I was the director of the Georgetown Public Library, the National Awarded Public Library, and I have a tattoo to prove it. My wife and I raised two kids, went K through twelve through Georgetown, from Frost to Georgetown High School. I've been a GISC parent for over sixteen years. People ask me, why am I running for school board? And I say, I have twelve thousand reasons to run for school board. Those are the twelve thousand kids in GISC. So I'm, I'm running to again, work on the success that we have done in the past, but I'm also here to help improve academic performance. I am concerned about the DNF schools that we have. There are wonderful things about GISC and my kids are perfect examples of that. But we do need to take care of some fundamentals and COVID has made it very difficult. So that's number one, to help improve academic performance. Number two is to retain and recruit great teachers. The secret to success is going to be great teachers and we need to retain those that are doing wonderful. And I'm afraid that, you know, seeing historic numbers of teachers are going to be leaving the profession. We need to recruit good teachers to GISC. Number three is just improve communication. We can always do a better job of communication. And then number four is in community engagement. It's going to take the community to help improve the schools or continue the schools in a great way. I've been a proven leader in Georgetown for over twenty-five years. I would love your support. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Alan Brown. I have also been in Georgetown for the better part of twenty years. I enjoy being able to tell people that this is my forty-eighth year in education. I spent thirty-one years in K-12, the K-12 sector, ten years in the classroom and I was a building leader, assistant principal and curriculum director, and then I became school superintendent. I was a school superintendent in four different districts in three different states for a period of seventeen years. So I do feel like I understand how public schools operate or ought to operate. I was able to retire from that and move into higher education at Concordia University, Texas in Austin. I was a full-time professor there for ten years and I also served as the dean of the College of Education at that fine university. So why am I doing this? Two reasons. I had made up my mind several years ago. I retired last year, by the way, officially. But I had made up my mind several years ago that once I did that, I was going to give back of my time. I got paid for all that forty-eight years of stuff, but it's time to, to give back. So I want to share my expertise with the community and I think I have something to, to offer. Second reason is I don't think there's any organization that cannot be improved by them. We certainly have our successes here and I could talk a long time about those successes, but we need improvement in other areas as well. You've already heard mention made of our test scores, the some of our curricular operations that can stand the improvement. So again, I want to give back that time, that experience and that expertise to be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tanya Easton and I'm running for school board trustee, place three. And I love children. I've loved them my whole life, even when I was a child. Like James, I had a rough life as a kid. I think a lot of us can relate to that, but I used that experience as a child. I went to school and I knew schools could save me, give me hope and it gave me a chance of a future. And so when I see our schools falling short of that, I feel really passionate about making sure that every learner, all learners have that opportunity. I went to college, my degree is in child adolescent studies and I have a minor in human services. I've worked with children and families for twenty years in a lot of different ways. I was a psych supervisor at a child development center. I've worked as an instructional assistant. I've worked in special ed as a one-to-one. I've been a behavioral coach. I've been a nutrition services lady. I've done all the things because I love being around kids and making a difference and all of those matter. And so when I am trustee, I will be thinking about every single person in, as a staff member. I currently work at the Williamson County Children's Advocacy Center as a community educator. I am on council PTA as the community education chair. I'm PTA president at Tivet Middle School for the last two and a half years. And I have partnered with the school district on many different initiatives. I've been on committees and with all those experiences, what I realized is there's a couple of areas that we could be doing a little bit better to serve our community and our students specifically. I think, I believe we need to improve our academic outcomes. We need to increase transparency when it comes to data and community, excuse me, district matters. And lastly, we need to improve our community engagement opportunities and provide feedback opportunities for our community. We have, I don't think there's a person here who isn't wildly passionate about Georgetown and our students. Thank you.
Great, thank you all for those lovely introductions. A quick reminder to please make sure you are also speaking into the microphone so that everybody on Zoom and in the back can hear you. The next question, we're going to start with Eric. If you are elected, what will your priorities be in your first year and how will you know if you've been successful?
I think it's understood, I, it's important for me for teachers to be paid fair. And it's important because I understand that without well-paid teachers, you can't have teachers who are happy about what they're doing. You might, but it's, it's highly unlikely. You've got to make sure they're compensated for the hard work they're doing. And it seems that work is getting harder and harder for teachers these days because of the state regulations. So there's, they have to work in an environment where kids are just different these days. They have, you know, when I was a kid, drugs was probably the worst thing that a kid could do. Today, it's much worse than that, guns and other things at school. So they have to work in those environments, heavily regulated and work extra hours, but yet not get paid for that. So for me, the first thing I would do in the first hundred days is to understand where we are with teacher pay and understand why we haven't been able to compensate fairly and then work with my colleagues to, to put a plan in place to make sure that we do that. And I don't know what the answer is right now, how you pay teachers. I just know that people like me are moving into Georgetown and all of a sudden we have more money in, in, from taxes. So there's got to be a way to be able to use some of that. There's also, you know, a bonus structure. I know that our surrounding districts and all throughout the state, districts are finding ways to compensate teachers, to, to retain teachers, and I think we need to do that. When you have well-paid teachers, you then have the foundation. You have the foundation to anchor a good scholastic program to be successful with the kids in the learning environment.
So for myself, it goes back to what I mentioned earlier with my son. It's going to be early literacy for, for young kids in our preschool district here. You know, what I'd want to do is identify students in areas in the greatest needs using not only the students and the math scores, but also with the parents and the teachers all working together. Then once we figure that out, I'd like to set goals and get a plan in action and then monitor the progress constantly. We need to stay student focused on this. Now, the math, map testing is fantastic. I don't know if you guys have seen this, but it will show you exactly where your kid is in reading. I'll use my son as an example for reading. He has dropped a whole lot over the past year and a half. And a lot of that has to do with time away from school. But also just, you know, COVID, you know, we'll throw that out there. I'm so tired of using that word, but when we, when we are required to teach our kids, we're not the professionals, right? And we did the best job we could, but there's a lot of people out there that are still struggling. And so we can identify exactly what's going on and that's what this map testing has done. We identified by the map score showing how he's decreased versus the rest of the state. Our teachers put a plan in and now I'm happy to say that after this last back test, he is now back on the path to recovery and catching back up. It's because they're proactive. Guys, our schools, we can talk about the stuff we're not doing right from three or four years ago, okay? And we do have to get better at those things, but there's a lot of great stuff that we are doing. And I'll tell you this too, it's okay to celebrate those things and be happy about them because there's a lot of progress that I'm excited about.
Well, I think that, you know, since we need to improve where we're at in the school districts, I think that the, the first port of contact that we have with the children in school is in the classroom. So we need to really focus on their classroom experience. So it is true that we, we, our, our kids have had lots of great teachers in GISC and but a lot of those great teachers choose to leave for other school districts and I think they're doing compensation. So we, I want, the first thing we need to do is we need to get into the game and improve it. We need to go to other school districts and hire their best teachers. It has a bunch of positive effects. One is it brings experience about what great school districts are really doing in the classroom and it brings it directly to Georgetown. But the, the next thing we need to do is we need to work on classroom discipline. It, it, it's a tremendous problem and we need to find a way to separate students who are, are not interested in learning, you can't teach students who are not interested in learning no matter what you do, and, and move them out of, of, of classroom where they're disinterested. And, and that will have a bunch of positive effects. So on the, as they say, they know that they have to earn their heat and, and be interested in engaging classes today. And the kids that are being removed, they will understand maybe the first time that, you know, that their jokes and pranks have consequences and that they're not helping their, their peers, you know, achieve everything their peers are looking to achieve. And then when we get, then we need to put them in a situation where they have to, you know, do projects and, and work up, you know, maintenance projects around the schools, maybe, maybe pick up trash, whatever it takes, so that they understand that, hey, I really, really would like to go back to the class and I would like to start to understand this stuff, otherwise I'll, I'll be stuck in a career that maybe I'm not going to be happy with. And the, the, the next thing we need to do is work on curriculum. So Cody was talking about, you know, sort of the disaster that's happening in elementary school and we need to get back to reading and writing and everything there.
Good morning. So here's the number one thing I would focus on over the next year. Keep in mind that with trustees struggling and web rolling off, we are going to have two trustees on a board of seven that will have been on the board for longer than a year and a half. And think of the past year and a half, the time during COVID. And so my first and foremost emphasis will be on building that team and staying committed to the goals that we have set as a board. Those goals are that our student academics improve, that we've got our students college career and military ready, that they are literate, that they are numerate, that they're graduating high school at a high rate, but at the same time, not losing sight of the fact that our community has told us that we want students learning to, to be shaped in the learner profile, that students are well-rounded, fully developed into the whole child with soft and hard skills, that we as a community develop a way to hold our, our schools accountable based on things that are important to us here at the local level. And we cannot discount the importance of social and emotional wellness in this time. It's going to be hard. Coming back from COVID, we've got students who have had learning loss completely across the board, all over the table. In one classroom, we may have students who are a year behind, two years behind, and some students who are not behind at all. We have to enable our teachers to stay committed to the long game that we as a district committed to years ago, when we decided to develop the whole child and prepare them for their future. Our role as a board is to make sure we're staying that course and we can only do that if we are a strong team with mutual respect and trust. That's going to be my number one thing. It's going to be tough, but it's very important.
My priorities are very similar. I think academic performance and compensation. So we've talked a lot about the loss of learning during the pandemic and that's a true fact. The biggest thing for me is librarian is literacy. So getting the reading and especially for the younger kids is imperative. I'm also worried about the math score. So for me, I'll know that we've been successful, we see improvement in test scores. I want us to go back and teach to the state curriculum. Compensation, again, I, I, my priority is to retain and recruit good teachers. It is going to be tough. It's not going to be easy to make that happen with the budget, but we can make incremental changes. But again, those are my two priorities is the academic performance. I am very concerned about where we were then COVID and then I'm worried about teachers leaving the profession and I call it a tsunami. It's not going to be easy. Elizabeth is absolutely right. This is not going to be easy. But I think that's why most of us are running for school board. We know that decisions are going to be tough. It needs to happen in a team environment, as you mentioned. But we'll know we're successful. We have measurable goals and then we actually test and keep and see where we are and make it that way.
Thank you, Eric. I'll have three priorities for my first year as a board member of elected. First, I want to refocus the board's priorities to more systematically address the state mandated curriculum because I think that curriculum approached in a systematic fashion will lead to much better outcomes than we've had for the past several years. I would also like to improve communications between the board and the community. One way to do this, we talk about communications a lot. Communication is not just two people talking to each other. The first tenant of the communication is listening. I think the board needs to do a better job of listening and responding to its citizens. The third thing is I want to be a part of the team that comes up with a plan to increase teacher salaries to at least the state level in the next three years. So how do we make sure all this gets done? We amend the current board goals to make them more measurable and more accountable. So every goal underneath needs to have objectives. Those objectives need to have specific activities underneath those. Those activities need to have people who are responsible for carrying out those activities. Those activities need to have people who are responsible for carrying out those activities. There need to be timelines and checklists and reports along the way to measure whether that's getting done or not. Then you measure all of that in the end. You congratulate yourself for the things that you're able to do. And the things that didn't work out so well, you refocus and you try again the next year. So this plan is full of transparency and it's full of full disclosure, and to me, it's the hallmark of a healthy art installation.
So one of my priorities would be is to develop and implement the community-based accountability system. Um, that's been on paper for a few good years now, and I believe in that system. I think that when um developed appropriately and implemented with fidelity, it would be a great way to do a couple of things. One, it builds transparency. It helps us to use data. Um, I know that STAR has been a very controversial topic in our town. Um, it is the measure that the state requires all students in the state of Texas um to be measured by. So community-based accountability system at its core has STAR. But there's also a bunch of other measures that our community is really um looking at as important to make sure that our kids are having good academic success and um and performance in our district. I think that's important, and we need to identify what those measures are. And we need to have regular updates. I would say bi-monthly at at our board meetings and talk about those. When we are able to be transparent with where we're at as a district, we can then engage our community and say, hey mentors, hey volunteers, we need to circle around these students right here and have targeted resources when it comes to our budget. And when it comes to our food resources, which is y'all, which is the businesses. Um, I think that that's really, really important because there's been a little bit of trust that's been broken. What I've heard um from parents, there is a little bit of disconnect on what's on paper and what is actually happening in classrooms. Um, and so I think that this is uh what help with trust. I think that it would help with transparency and bringing data back. Um, we need measurable outcomes. We need to be able to quantify how we are doing. Um, and like I say, let's rip the Band-Aid off and and start getting the work done for our students. They deserve that. Um, and finally, it's the accountability. I met with a teacher yesterday, and he said, yeah, it starts it starts from the top and it's and it goes all the way down. That came from a teacher, and I want to provide that um at the board level.
Sorry, Cody. Um, how many business and community leaders do we have? Can I show hands? You run, manage, work in a business? All right, so let's just be honest and stop all the political piece of this thing. Uh, most of what these guys are talking about are indicators. Indicators don't fix problems. When you look at our school district, we have two problems, right? We're broken on our board, the very top of it, and we're broken at the bottom in the classroom. That's what we need to fix. I don't care how you measure success. We can have those arguments all all day. It does not matter to me. Um, if you do not fix the fractured board and you do not fix what's happening in our classrooms, then we will never succeed regardless of what metric you want to use. Right? So on the board, everyone knows we have what, four, three divided? Is that the consensus, right? Everyone kind of hears that. It's all I hear. So we have to get past that. If you have mom and dad working against each other, it's really hard to be a parent. And that's basically what these guys have done for the last few years. So we need to fix that and address that. And the second thing we need to do is we need to fix the foundational issues. Um, we need to fix our hourly staffing. Teachers are burdened, not because they're teaching. They love teaching. They're burdened because we're asking to be a janitor or a bus monitor or one of other ten things since COVID has came in that has really put a stressor on them. You want to retain good employees? Then listen to what their problems are. Um, we need to fix the attendance issue. We need to get back to pre-COVID attendance, right? How are we asking teachers to to teach a kid that's two weeks behind, seven days behind, three days behind, one day behind? And move this whole group forward to success? Again, I don't care what your measure of success is. You can't do it if we don't fix the foundational issues. Um, I I agree the behavior issues need to be fixed, right? If we're disruptive in classrooms, we can't fix that, but that does not mean you preclude kids from participation in education to elevate a certain group. That's that's crazy to me. Um, I think if we if we're honest and we sit back in the end of a year, we'll measure that success by having a cohesive board that may not agree on everything, but at least is focused on the common goal of moving our kids forward and healing what has happened in the last two years. Thank you.
All right, time is flying this morning, and so we have time for one more question. We'll start with Cody. Um, school board members have been entrusted with oversight of the financial resources our community has at its disposal for the education of our children. Two of the key functions of the school board are adopting a budget and adopting a tax rate sufficient to fund that budget. Describe your priorities in making these decisions. I'm gonna, yes. Yes, we skipped three and four. So if you were following along in order, we've moved on to question five. The summary is basically.
Okay, yes, yes, yes. So of course, we have lots and lots of growth. Twenty-three multi-billion dollar businesses come to wings in county. Okay, we're going to have to scour our budgets to find dollars and cents. We are going to have to reprioritize where to send money to. Just like these guys have all reiterated, we have to attract the right teachers, and then we have to retain them. And we've got to look at how to do that from a business sense. We have to look at where to start taking dollars and putting them. We're going to have so much growth conservatively. We're going to go from twelve thousand students to twenty-one thousand students in the next ten years. We have to plan for it. They've done a great job so far of projecting this growth and knowing when it's coming and where it's coming to. And we've got to grasp this data and continue to grow ahead of it. That way, if we're if we're behind the curve on this, we're always going to be behind. We've got to get ahead of it, which we have, and we have to stay ahead of it. That's why I think it's so important. I'm going to say we need to keep a list upon the floor. She's the current president. Okay, she has done a wonderful job of leading this group, and we need to continue that. Again, I'm Cody Hurd. I'm ready for place three.
So the first part of figuring out your your budget is figuring out what your actual requirements are. And as far as I can tell, the actual requirement start in a classroom, we need to we need figure out how to get, you know, students in into classes that have where the skill levels are pretty similar, so that teaching doesn't have to teach all kinds of different skill levels. So that that will probably set the class size and and also it will set the the sort of the number of teachers we need. We need to get get the uh the sort of uh pay rates for teachers that will keep them here and get and get them coming here. And that that's the great majority of the cost basis for our district, and then we have to work on the budget uh to uh calculate that forward, and then we need to fund the budget with with whatever uh uh tax increase or decrease is is that calculated. Um, and when when we get, when we're we're doing the, when we're spending money, we need to spend it like it's our actual money. So we can't, we can't come up with frivolous things and and add them to the budget just because we can't. We need to, you know, pare down places that are not necessary and 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 really respect the fact that that people work hard for the money that they're giving us for their surrounding school district.
Okay, I will be the first to admit that the budget is probably the most bonerous obstacle I had to overcome when becoming a trustee. Uh, just briefly, in a nutshell, the way schools are funded in Texas is it's with local property uh tax dollars, but it's mandated by the state. How we spend those and what of those we get to keep. So there's things like tax rate compression. The faster our property values grow, the less we can actually reduce. We actually have to reduce the tax rate, lowering the dollars. We're a recapture uh district, meaning we're property wealthy, meaning that we give millions back to the state of Texas. So all of you are sitting out there, you probably recently got your WCAD uh tax appraisal and the 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 tax associated with that. But did you know that we are estimated as a school district to give forty-eight million dollars back to the state next year? We don't get to keep all that money. So we have limited dollars within which we have to fund everything that's important to us. Over eighty-five percent of our budget goes to salaries already. That reduces even more the dollars we have towards those programs. We have to keep front of mind what our goals are and what programs are most fundamental to us in making progress as a district in allocating the limited dollars we have. Bonds are another thing. Like Cody said, we have to be proactive in planning for the growth. We don't want to find ourselves in a situation where students are overcrowded in portable buildings because we didn't plan ahead to make sure that we had space for those students that we know are moving to Georgetown in droves. And the budget, that process, it takes a business mind. I'm an attorney. I've always deferred the expertise to the business folks, but a well-rounded board absolutely must have business owners. Because the budget is one of our number one most important things we do as a board member. It ain't easy.
She's right. It's not easy. Uh, she did a great job of explaining um the way schools are funded here in Texas. The one thing then, again, tax rate based on evaluations, the recapture, all those things are absolutely true. It makes it very difficult. Um, however, again, your budget should be based on your priorities. So that's what we're focused. And so since one of my uh priorities is compensation, we're going to have to figure out a way to incrementally make that change. The valuations went up forty percent here in this area. I know most of y'all got your tax statement. Uh, but again, there's only so much we can do as a board dealing with that tax rate. Uh, again, the priorities of the the board should be the priorities of the budget. It just aligns. Yeah, as a city employee, we had to deal with budgets like this all the time. And what we did when we made budget requests, we had to align with the council goals. So even when you made a budget request, you had to align those to the council goals. And it's the same way with the school. The school's going to make uh changes to their budget, make budget requests. They need to align with the board's goals. Um, it's going to be difficult, and I think Elizabeth was absolutely right. Um, the budget is going to be one of the toughest things that the board has to deal with.
So board members are responsible for judiciously caring for the monies entrusted to them by the taxpayers. That's the reason they're called trustees. There has to be public trust because we as board members would be stewards of the taxpayer dollar. Board members are are constantly involved in this uh juggling act. We have to be concerned about the needs of the district, these students, versus the need to manage that money carefully. So I believe that the only way a board can do that is what I call goal-driven decision-making. Every budgetary decision needs to be based on those goals set by the board. Another reason that the school board trustees are so important. This constantly keeps the priorities of the district in front of the board and keeps uh special interest groups and frivolous spending from creeping its way into the budget. I remember superintendent, I would quite often get approached by people who uh after the budget had already been passed, of course, with all these uh budget requests. And my first question uh to them would be, explain to me how this relates to board goals. And if they could not do so, it was quite often a fairly short conversation. It all needs to be tied together. And Elizabeth mentioned very correctly that eighty-five percent of most organizations' budgets are tied up in in salaries. So that's all the more reason why budgetary decisions need to be based on goals. There's not so much leeway in that budget as you might think for any kind of discretionary spending. So the money that is left over needs to be budgeted and managed very wisely.
So budget was the one thing I was like, I don't know if I'm going to run because that seems like a bit of a challenge. And I talked to people who are on the board right now, and they said, don't worry about that. There's training, right? You don't have to be a business owner to to be able to educate yourself and to get the learning that you need to make uh good decisions and ask hard questions as a trustee. So I feel confident with what I've learned and what I can learn um to be able to um deal with our our budget well. Um, when it comes to trustee, like the gentleman had said, we have to make sure that our budget is aligned very very directly and singly and intentionally with our board goals. Um, and those need to be measurable, right? If we're not having measurable outcomes, how do we know that we're using our money um fiscally responsibly? Uh, growth is coming. We all know that, and I think the district has done a phenomenal job when it comes to acquiring buildings and land, and I think that we block that down. But what we haven't done is build um processes and frameworks to build um to grow and and to scale with that growth. Right now, we're not providing our students with an exceptional, excellent outcome academic experience. And so if we're not doing that with eleven thousand children, how are we going to do that with twenty-one? I think it's really important that we're very intentional with our our targeted resources for teachers when it comes to high-quality resources um for instructional supports, um behavioral supports, all of those things, all of our money, the fifteen percent that we can use that isn't going to salaries needs to go directly to supporting our teachers um to provide the excellent education that that's what that's our number one job as a trustee is make sure our our students are future-ready and they're getting a strong ac- excuse me, excellent academic um experience so that when they graduate, that they are going to want to stay in Georgetown, and they're going to be business owners and wildly successful and productive citizens.
Um, well, I guess unlike everyone else, I love budgets. Um, I live in the world of P and L's, balance sheets, investment statements. Um, it it is how I manage business. It's how I've been so successful in business for the last sixteen years. Understanding the financial capacities and limitations of an organization is not easy. It's not something you're going to pick up on a whim. It's something you're going to have to succeed by trial and unfortunately error. Fortunately for our community, I made those errors on my own dime and will not make them with our tax dollars. Um, my priority, which was the question, would be in keeping our tax rate as low as possible to manage this district. Um, the concept of recapture is is crazy to think that we're sending twenty-two million last year for potentially forty million in the future out of our community. That's dollars that if we kept in this community, people here could use um for honestly gas at this point or or investing into local businesses to help us grow as a community. Um, there's a ton of tools that we can bring in. Um, you you take your budget and you do budget versus actual. You you pick certain financial ratios, right? Um, you know, business, we use inventory turnover rates. We use debt to income. We use uh current ratios. We use we use so many financial tools to understand the health of what's happening. Um, most people don't have the capacity or knowledge to do that. Um, and I'm fortunate, and I think our community is fortunate that I have that, and I want to bring that to our board. Um, I don't think that we have a lack of financial power in Georgetown. I don't think we have a lack of money in our school district. Um, I think there are some management tools that we can use to make sure we're efficiently aligning those things, um, and that we can identify where those losses are. Um, but I do believe that we are financially a very successful district. If you guys look up any of the records from T E A or anywhere else. Thanks.
So one of the, so I was the CFO of eight-hundred-dollar operation. So I understand budgets. I understand how to put them together. But more importantly, I know how to grow money. Uh, I was a consultant in my previous life and for twenty-five years, and I worked with some Fortune one-hundred companies and identifying ways to grow revenue bases. So we we when we think about money, we usually talk about budgets. We're talking about where can we cut budgets? Well, I don't spend that much time with where can we bring in more money? And I know we're limited on the tax rates, but there's other things besides taxes to to be able to fund different kinds of events. So I agree with what's been said uh along the along the tables. And one of one of the things you start with is you start with a vision, and you start with the goals that back out that vision. Your budgets then go against those particular goals. And let's just keep in mind, there's there's ways out there. And we I work with my colleagues to determine that the best ways to bring in more monies. But there are ways out there that actually start to increase our our revenue base. And I can, I personally can cut budgets and and be uh very adept at it because I had to do that for Chevron. I had to do that for BP. So I understand how you go in, drill down to find where you can cut costs. I'm really, really good at that. Uh, I've built two successful businesses with that kind of mentality. I'm not necessarily sure this is where we would need to cut costs. I'd have to look at the budgets, but it's about revenue raising. And so that's the energy that I would bring to this operation.
All right. Well, thank you very much to our candidates for being here today and for sharing all of your thoughts. I think you have plenty more that you'd love to share, so I encourage everyone to chat with the candidates afterwards as well. I think there are a couple of announcements, so I'm going to turn it back over now to.
While Brittany's doing a couple cheaper announcements, uh, if you have a business startup, run around with a basket quickly for some.
Awesome. So I just want to thank everyone for coming out today. Thank all of the candidates for coming out. Please give them a round of applause. Well, they get them here. I heard it was the first time they've all been in a room together, so. Uh, and we also want to thank our sponsor, Texas Podcast, also. Please give them a round of applause.
Uh, and we also wanna thank our sponsor, Texas Pop Press. Also, please give them a round of applause. April twenty-first, we're gonna have our business after hours at Chubert by now, right on Willings Drive, five to seven. April twenty-seven is our lunch and lunch register for that event. I can do events calendar. That's eleven thirty-one. We're gonna have Laura Cates, Terry speaking at that event. And the topic's gonna be transforming your testimonial form. Topic details are on the events conference wall. Uh, please feel free to reach out to Chamber staff if you're interested in hosting, speaking at, or sponsoring an event. Uh, and then there are QR codes on your tables for the survey. Please take the event survey.
Do we talk about leadership? Alright, so leadership Georgetown is a, is a, a group, program, thank you, sorry. Um, it's a program through the chamber and I'm in the current class. It's a great opportunity to learn about the city and what happens here and a lot of different things that you don't know about already. So you'll go through um the, the Public Safety Day, Government Day. You'll learn about nonprofits. You'll really get a sense of what Georgetown is all about. So whether you've been here one year, twenty years, thirty years, I highly encourage you to go through it. You'll learn a lot of leadership skills as well. In doing that, one of the things that we're, I'm charged to do this year is a service project. We're very honored to be giving back to Big, which is just down the street from us. We are going to, just down the street from us. We are helping them build an herb garden and an awning for one of their buildings. Where you come in is we're putting on a mini golf tournament on a very memorable day, May the fourth. It's easy to remember because it's Star Wars Day. May the fourth be with you. So feel free to wear your Star Wars costumes. We're gonna be at Syntex Mini Golf. You can um sponsor a team of four people. If you don't know four people, you can introduce yourself to the people at your table or you can sponsor four citizens from Big uh to play mini golf. That would be super fun as well. So you can sponsor a team or you can sponsor a whole and get a sign made by Georgetown Sign Company and, and support us that way. So if you're interested in either one of those things, then please see me afterwards. But absolutely make plans to be there. It is again, May the fourth from five to eight P M. Alright, now we're gonna give away, I know you guys are all here for this, uh, the door prize.
We have a couple over here. One, I think I know. If you wanted to explain it.
Six pack of Shiner Buck beer.
Alright, and that is going to Husek. First, first, absolutely. Okay, Jen's gonna take that. Alright, excellent. And, so, and, and from, and the, the famous um coffee, the community impact coffee from, actually from Sweet Lemon, which is fantastic. If you haven't been to Sweet Lemon, then you should swag, you know, the liquid. Oh, there's imaginary swag. See, you don't see it, but there's like a coffee cup, maybe some uh, you know, spread. Oh, a koozie. You definitely need that because you need that to go with your, your Shiner Buck. Alright, and that is going to Jerome. What happened to Jerome? Oh, there you are, Jerome, from Eagles from California. Thank you so much. Thank you to all of our candidates for being here. Have an absolutely fantastic day.